All right, welcome, welcome. Today's Education and Youth Committee hearing is on Council Bill 19-0385 to make all single-user restrooms across the city of Baltimore gender-neutral. I'm Councilman Zeke Cohen, Chairman of the Committee. I will begin by acknowledging my colleagues from the 14th District, Vice Chairwoman, Vice Chair Member of the Committee, Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you.
From the 9th District, Councilmember John Bullock.
Mr. Chair.
And from the 3rd District, Councilmember Ryan Dorsey.
Thank you.
I am also joined today by Jeffrey Amoros from the Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Chair.
Matthew Peters, Staff to the Committee, Rebecca Tab from Law, Elena DePietro from the Health Department, Paul Nibber from the Office of Civil Rights, Darnell Ingram, as well as many good folks. For today's hearing, I'm going to give some brief introductory remarks about the bill. We will hear from student testimony, we will hear agency reports, and then we will hear from the public. Due to some scheduling conflicts, we will be voting on this bill at 6:00 PM, and then we will continue to hear testimony. And there are some proposed amendments, friendly amendments, on my colleagues' desks. This legislation creates a simple requirement that any building in Baltimore with a single-stall restroom must have gender-neutral signage. We came to this legislation by listening to students, parents, and educators who are fighting for policy JBB in the school system. They wanted to make sure trans and gender-non-binary students were recognized and protected. I remember hearing from a trans student who had been so badly bullied that they attempted suicide. I remember hearing from an amazing trans teacher whose constant harassment had caused her to leave the classroom. And I remember hearing from many in the community that they did not feel seen by our city. Yesterday's incident of misgendering during an arrest at Johns Hopkins underscores the importance of changing the way we think and speak about each other. But today, I say to our trans and gender-non-conforming sisters, brothers, and siblings, you are seen. I want to especially thank Jabari Lyles, the Mayor's LGBTQ liaison, and Stephanie Mavronis from my office for their great work on this legislation. Let me conclude by saying that this bill is about inclusivity for all Baltimoreans. We received support from our LGBTQ community, as well as disability advocates, and women who are frankly tired of waiting on long lines while us men rush through the restrooms. At a time when Baltimore has suffered so many setbacks, we must do everything in our power to make ours the most welcoming, safe, and inclusive city in America. So with that, we are going to hear testimony. I also wanted to recognize Tony DiFranco from Legislative Reference, who has done great work on this legislation as well. So, thank you. All right, we are going to hear first from a student at Roland Park Elementary Middle School, Alex Main. Come on up.
Hi. So, my name is Alex. I'm in 7th grade at Roland Park. I'm speaking regarding the new bill about gender-neutral bathrooms. Me being non-binary is not easy for a lot of reasons, but one of the hardest things is the bathroom. Most of the time, there is a woman's bathroom and a men's bathroom, but what about the people who don't identify as either? I'm always scared to go to the public restrooms unless there is a gender-neutral bathroom, because if I walk into a woman's bathroom, which is the gender I was assigned at birth, I'll get looked at like I'm crazy, because most of the time, I choose to look more masculine than feminine. So I'm scared a woman is going to say that there's a male in the bathroom. And then there's the men's bathroom. It's really uncomfortable for me in the men's bathroom, for reasons I'm sure you can figure out. But like the woman's bathroom, I'm scared I'll get caught out. I remember once, I was at the Enoch Pratt Library in Roland Park. I had to use the bathroom, and I didn't want to walk to Starbucks just to use the bathroom. So I kept looking and looking, waiting to make sure nobody was near the bathroom, near the single-stall women's bathroom. And then, once I was in the bathroom, I just sat and waited to make sure there were no voices. When I walked out, I walked very quick. I was so scared, because so many people have been harassed about bathrooms. If this bill were to be passed, then people would take into consideration that you're being more welcoming to our diverse community, and the atmosphere overall would be more welcoming. This bill would help me, this bill would help many others with our daily lives by making us feel comfortable and safe in places as simple as a library. Thank you.
Thank you. Always appreciate hearing from our students. Great job. We'll now hear from Rhianna Barrero, who's an 8th grade student at Hampstead Hill Academy in the wonderful 1st District.
Hello, my name is Rihanna, and I'm an 8th grader at Hampstead Hill Academy. I'm also a proud member of our Open Doors Rainbow Alliance. Our club has advocated for gender-neutral, single-stall bathrooms, because providing access to bathrooms that matches one's gender is important for the safety and success of all students. School is a place where students come to learn, so it's important that we create that space where kids feel safe and included, regardless of their gender identity. If we have a gender-non-binary student, they now have the option to use the bathroom in private without fear of harassment. It seems like a little step, but it's a huge leap for others in the fight for equality and inclusion. I urge you to push for gender-neutral bathrooms for all the people of Baltimore. However, mine is only one voice. Here is what other classmates who couldn't be here tonight had to say. "7th grade student Hannah, ever since the gender-neutral bathrooms have been implemented, I have felt safer in my community and more welcomed. The bathrooms have made people think about what type of pronouns they use, when not only referring to me, but what many other people as well. It would also make other people feel safer and welcomed in their community, to know they are accepted. Implementing something as small as gender-neutral bathrooms is a powerful thing. It makes people think about who they are instead of what they are, and accept who they are as well." From 8th grade, from 8th grader Fiona, "I have had many experience with teasing and bullying in school, especially in the form of name-calling. So I know what it feels like to be singled out from the group, and it does not feel good. Providing a safe place for everyone to use a facility regardless of gender or gender identity will help address this inequality and feelings of isolation. Thank you."
Thank you. Again, wonderful to hear from our young people in Baltimore. We're next going to hear from Mr. Steve Plunk, also from Hampstead Hill Academy.
Hello. My name is Steve Plunk, and I'm Director of Restorative Practices at Hampstead Hill Academy. We're a public charter school in southwest Baltimore. I'm also the founding advisor of our school's Gay-Straight Alliance, and you just heard from one of our members. Growing up gay in the Midwest during the 1980s, I fully get and understand the struggle that transgender community faces for acceptance. But one of the things that I never had to do was hide who I was, or advocate for myself just to use the bathroom. And honestly, I had never really given it much thought. It actually took members of my own GSA to bring awareness to this problem in our own school. So I'd like to present just a couple pieces of testimony from staff members at Hampstead Hill, starting with our principal, Mr. Matthew Hornbeck. As a city school's principal, I support access to gender-neutral restrooms. When our LGBTQ club members brought this initiative to my attention a couple years ago, and I looked at their reasoning, it was clearly the right choice. In the words of an 8th grader discussing why other schools should adopt this policy, she said, "Come on, it's 2019. Gender-neutral restrooms are yet another issue where our youth are out in front leading. Adults need to follow their lead." We had a couple other testimonies I won't read fully, but 8th grade Amy Cosmer was talking about how long the women's bathroom line was at our school, because we have more women than men teachers, and she would wait for a very long time between classes, and it was sort of a problem. Our drama teacher Kelly Durkin talks from a parent perspective, and how often in public her husband has to go into female bathrooms because there's a changing table, and how it would be so much easier if there was just a gender-neutral facility that had a diaper-changing station. And she concludes her testimony, and I have to read this for Kelly's behalf, "Don't flush our chants away. Please vote yes on this bill." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plunk. All right, we are now going to hear agency reports, beginning with the Finance Department. And I believe Mr. Amoros will be stepping in for Finance.
Pincheting today. So Finance stands by its report in support of the bill. I did want to just take a moment, though, and thank the Council Services staff. I know it's been a challenging 48 hours for the city with all of our IT issues. Matt and the team at Council Services has been absolutely sensational, making sure that agency reports and all of the technical aspects of these hearings continued despite the difficulties we're facing. So thank you, Matt and your team.
Excellent, thank you. And just to reiterate what Mr. Amoros said, as folks may or may not know, we've had some pretty serious IT issues here at City Hall. And again, I just want to thank Matt and Tony, and all the folks, DePaul, everyone else, Jeff, who have continued to work extremely hard. Without access to email, with servers being down, we are still moving the business of the city forward. And I think that says a lot about some of the people that work here. So with that, Health Department, DePaul.
DePaul Nibber with the Health Department. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee. Before I begin, I want to thank you, Councilmen, for introducing this bill, and also all of your work that went into it. We had a lot of collaboration here, and I think it resulted in something that is going to really benefit the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So from the Health Department's perspective, one of our stated missions is to tackle disparities in health. And so, when we think of health, we have to think in terms of what are some of the greatest modern advents in history that have really advanced public health throughout the ages? And indoor plumbing. It's very simple. And yet, we're asking an entire segment of our society to avoid using them in public. According to some of the statistics that we received from the National Center for Transgender Equality, they had a 2014 survey wherein 12% of respondents reported being verbally harassed, 1% physically attacked, and 1% sexually assaulted. More than half, 59%, reported that they were avoiding using our restrooms in public. With that in mind, we have to keep in mind exactly the toll that that impresses upon our transgender community. I mean, this is going to result in the disproportionate suicides, which we see borne out in the facts. So with that in mind, this is a public health issue, and we are thankful for this legislation being put forward, and we urge a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your partnership on this bill. From the Office of Civil Rights, Director Darnell Ingram.
Good afternoon, Education and Youth Committee Chairman Cohen, councilmembers, individuals in the LGBTQIA+ community, as well as our invited guests. When I took over the helm as the Director for the Office of Civil Rights, there was a vision that we created, which was justice through love, which is leadership, outreach, vigilance, and equity. And the other name for love is understanding. This bill goes just toward that, understanding, a fight against inequities and bias. So this office supports this bill. And I want to start with a quote by a writer and a gay rights activist, Michael Bronski. He says, "The progress of LGBTQ rights is often directly tied to, sometimes through indirect routes, multiple fights for human dignity and freedom." Human dignity and freedom. So I thank this committee for this opportunity, for this office, and our community members here in the city to speak about this bill, particularly regarding this office's support of it. This bill stipulates that any public, single-user restroom in a commercial industrial establishment, a place of public accommodations, or a city owned or occupied, must be made available by use by individuals of any gender. Identified with gender-inclusive language signage represents a paradigm shift in the culture of Baltimore, and its effort to expand equal treatment to all without regard to race, color, national origin, ancestry, sexual orientation, or gender identity. So I congratulate this committee, first on behalf of all persons who have stood in long lines, waiting, and waiting, and waiting because of the unequal use of a bathroom, giving a person's stated identity. This bill changes that thought, and changes our culture to a culture of inclusion. I would also like to remind those who have concerns about this bill, and any reservations about the bill, that it only applies to single occupancy restrooms, those which are usually used by one person at a time, and can be locked from inside upon entering. This bill does not apply to any public bathroom occupied with multiple parties at the same time. This bill welcomes all to perform a basic need, the access to use a restroom. So this committee is doing a marvelous progressive job, and I applaud the council members for that. And this is a turning point in the history of the treatment of members of our community, which is the LGBTQ community in Baltimore, as well as those who visit our city and will be exemplified by its passage and implementation of a progressive thinking of this council, and the willingness of people of this city to embrace diversity, policy, practice, fair treatment for all. As Councilman Cohen said, "This bill is about creating a more welcoming, inclusive city in our public accommodations, particularly for our trans community, our gender-non-binary community, folks who would not feel welcome in the restroom labeled either male or female." In conclusion, the former president of NAACP said, "We must ensure, honor, integrity, and a vision to move forward." With this progressive council bill, they are moving forward with a sense of inclusion for all, and this bill does just that. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from the Law Department.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Elena DePietro with the Baltimore City Law Department, and the Law Department has reviewed the bill, and in the course of, I mean, approves it for form of legal specialty, but during the course of reviewing the bill, we discovered that in Article 4, Section 1-1 of our code, that's the Community Relations article, there is a reference to an old part of law in general that excludes from the definition of discrimination, the provision of separate bathroom facilities based on biological sex. We feel that that section is totally superseded by state law, federal law, and may even violate Title IX. So it is our recommendation that we take this opportunity to strike that provision from the code.
Thank you.
All right, we will now hear from the, a report from the Department of Human Resources, again by Mr. Amoros.
Wearing a few different hats tonight. The Department of Human Resources also stands by its report.
Thank you, sir. I do want to recognize my colleague from the 8th District, Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, sir.
Got it. Once again, back to Mr. Amoros for General Services.
DGS also stands by its report.
Thank you, sir. All right. We will now hear from Jabari Lyles, the Mayor's LGBTQ liaison, and one of the great forces behind this legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen, members of the City Council, members of this committee. My name is Jabari Lyles, and I'm proud to represent and serve Baltimore's LGBTQ community as the LGBTQ Affairs Liaison in the Office of the Mayor. In my role, I support and advise city government on addressing the needs of the LGBT community while working to grow the community's capacity and visibility. As a former city school teacher and nonprofit director here in Baltimore, working primarily on LGBTQ issues, I've developed a unique opportunity and point of view to understand the great work our city is currently doing, and the work that has yet to be done, to ensure Baltimore's LGBT community is safe, unified, stable, healthy, and included. I look forward to working with all of you towards this end. The legislation considered tonight is one of our first important attempts at building a city that is truly inclusive of all. Nationally, Baltimore is behind on issues involving the LGBT community. We know from painful experience that those who have the courage to walk the streets openly as LGBTQ, or even those who are perceived to be, face the reality of the possibility of violence, danger, discrimination, harassment, or exclusion. While working for GLSEN, the nation's leading education organization addressing LGBT issues in schools, I remember the campaign for teachers to display Safe Space stickers outside of their classrooms, communicating that they were a safe adult for LGBTQ youth to confide in. Just as Safe Space stickers will not solve the problem of LGBT student harassment, gender-neutral sign-ins will not fix LGBTQ discrimination in Baltimore. However, what it will do is send a message of inclusivity, and just might be the thing that was needed to save someone in our community, particularly our trans and gender-nonconforming residents, from harm. It also begins the conversation about gender equity and LGBTQ inclusivity that is long overdue in Baltimore, so that I don't expect this will be the last time you see me. I look forward to your support on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Jabari. Quick question for you. You mentioned that you see this as a first step. What's the trajectory? What are you thinking in terms of becoming a more LGBTQ-friendly city? What comes next?
Well, I was just talking to some of my community members, that I think that in the past six months, there's been more LGBT people here in City Hall than there's ever been. And I think that that is exemplary of the much-needed conversation of the community that hasn't happened. Our community has largely existed in the city, in the shadows, in the jails, in other places. And now, with the appointment of my position, the LGBT Commission, and the great partnership of the City Council, I do expect our community to continue to be more visible, and urge our leaders to be held accountable for LGBT issues. So I see this as a very simple, non-controversial issue, and I hope that we will continue to take looks at things like language in the city code, how our young people are treated in schools, treatment of sex workers, transgender folks, discrimination, police accountability. We have a lot to do. So I think this is just the first of many opportunities, and not the last time that you'll see us keep attacking this issue and holding Baltimore accountable to be more inclusive.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
All right. Important to include within this discussion, folks from our business community, because we know that some businesses will be asked to change their practices around signage at some of their restrooms. So here to testify is Bryson Keens, owner of Point South.
Hi, I'm Bryson Keens, owner of Point and South, Dunn Bell's Point, 1st District. Zeke Cohen. As a small business owner, anything that we can do to shine a brighter light, a positive light, on the city of Baltimore, and make us a more inclusive and diverse city, we should do. Anything that helps us draw and attract people as a business owner is important. So if we can do this measure, and this first small step towards some LGBTQIA issues, I think it's as important, and as a business community, no one should be against this. This should be a positive move in the right direction. Like I said, maybe the first small step towards a larger discussion that we can have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. We will now hear from David Hallecker, from Baltimoreans for Educational Equity.
Good evening. I would like to give you a story, if I can, from when I was a kid. Growing up, I loved brightly colored clothing. It was the 80s, so there were a lot of opportunities to see lime-green or day-glow yellow shirts and pants, but for boys, especially for husky boys, my options were somewhat limited. I remember being at Woolworth's that used to be on Hartford Road with my dad, and we were looking at casual bike shorts. And body positivity wasn't what it is today, so there weren't a lot of options. There were two pairs. One was black with a yellow pattern down the side, and one was hot pink. I loved hot pink. I think it was probably my favorite color. But I remember telling some kids at school how much I loved the color hot pink, and a lot of the boys saying, "That's a girl color." So I remember it was summertime, and I needed something with the cool flexibility to do my different activities, and I asked my dad if I could get these hot pink shorts. He said, "Sure," without a second thought. And then I remember nervously asking him, "Dad, is pink a girl color?" My dad laughed a little. He's a handy guy, and he's strong, and he says, "There's no such thing as a boy color or a girl color. I'll show you something when we get home." And when we got home, he showed me some very poorly colorized pictures of my grandfather as a baby, wearing a pink gown that was, by all accounts, a dress. My grandfather was a World War II fighter pilot who was a prisoner of war in Nazi Germany. There is no question that he was a tough SOB, and he was wearing pink. The point of all this is that our understanding of what constitutes gender, or one gender or another, or not being a gender, is a completely arbitrary social construct. Children learn their preferences from their friends and from their parents. And a parent who teaches their child that they can play with G.I. Joe but not Barbie dolls is not much different than a parent who teaches their child that they can play with Joey but not Jamar. If I can paraphrase the 1977 seminal work of Terogomi, "Everyone poops." And our schools just need to make sure that students and faculty are safe when they're pooping, instead of worrying about whether they're wearing blue or pink when they do it. I'd like to close today with this. I'm proud of this committee and of Councilmember Cohen for challenging what we think of as a city when we think of gender. Congratulations to Councilmember Clark on your forthcoming retirement. This should not be controversial. It should not require bravery. But in 2019, with hate crimes against people of color, Jews, Muslims, and our LGBTQ siblings on the rise, it does. Many have stood their ground and faced bigotry when it comes for them, but it is far more rare to find leaders who seek out bigotry and force it to face them. We belong in a city where more people lead for Baltimore schools with loving examples. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Jack John Ziegler from Sugar.
My name's Jack John Ziegler. I'm the owner of Sugar, which is a retail store in Baltimore's Hamden neighborhood. As the owner of a business, the close friend of a woman whose son has disabilities that require her to assist him in the bathroom, and always will, as a friend and relative of many trans and non-binary people, and as a woman who stood in line way too long for a single-stall bathroom when the men's room was empty, I am here to urge your support of this bill. In my store, we have two bathrooms, one for staff and a public gender-neutral one for customers. People in the neighborhood know that we will not question their gender when they need to use the bathroom, or at any other time. I've seen the desperation on some folks' faces when they rush in. Accessing a bathroom is a basic need, something that many of us are privileged to take for granted. Unfortunately for some people, this is not the case. I'd ask you to imagine what it would be like if every time you were in public and needed a bathroom, you also had to confront the possibility of explaining your gender or the disability of someone you love. Additionally, consider the possibility that explanation could put you in danger of cruel words or physical assault. I know people that refuse to drink water when they aren't at home, people who have ended up dehydrated or with bladder infections due to holding their urine. It's simply unacceptable, and frankly, unnecessary. In addition, a customer who needs a bathroom and can't access one is not going to stay in the establishment. A customer that needs to pee and is scared that they will be confronted if they choose the quote-unquote "wrong" bathroom is not a customer that is going to shop any more than necessary. It's basic business sense. Certainly, some businesses can choose to relabel their bathrooms without a law. However, making this the law in Baltimore City will send a message that all are welcome, regardless of gender identity or disability. This message goes out not only to our citizens, but to visitors and tourists as well. A message that, in this age of constant assault from the federal government on the LGBTQ communities, people with color and disabilities, and women, it is sorely needed. Lastly, making all single-stall bathrooms gender-inclusive is an action that harms no one, and instead greatly improves the lives of some of those most likely to experience discrimination and harm. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Akil Patterson.
Thank you very much, Councilman Cohen, members of the committee, distinguished councilmen and city agencies for all supporting this. This legislation isn't just about bathrooms. It is about human dignity and respect. It is about working with the business community to ensure that people that enter those facilities feel they're respected. And the other day, I was on Instagram, and I was having a conversation with my old friend Brendan Iambidazio. Now, very few people, you know, remember Brendan Iambidazio, other than being a Super Bowl champion in 2013. But in 2013, Brendan Iambidazio took marriage equality to the Super Bowl. It was because of a text message, I'm sorry, a message via Facebook in 2012 that he was able to do that. One day, I was sitting around, and I said, "Brendan Iambidazio supported marriage equality in 2009? Why didn't anybody know about it?" Why didn't anybody know about this?" So I messaged him on Facebook. That message turned into a support of marriage equality, which turned into a global and national movement from sports world. Small steps create large outcomes that you may never foresee moving forward. This is a small step that could create large outcomes moving forward, not for just the city of Baltimore, but for our region and for our nation. Because it is the small steps, the tiny things, that matter to people, to give them human respect and dignity, that we transfer into things later on that will make us better people. Again, this legislation isn't about a bathroom. It is about carrying on a message that Baltimore is open for business for all, that Baltimore will have equality across the board. And I think under the new leadership of both our mayor and our new council president, we can do more. We can ensure that LGBT individuals specifically are written into not just allowing to use bathrooms, but we put them into the MBEWBE programs, that we allow for contracts and services to be used, not only for those minority statuses, but we also give them to young trans women who are looking for employment opportunities, that we address our public housing needs, which systemically have focused against people of color and people of the LGBT community. We have an opportunity to start. And so unfortunately, Mr. Lyles, he is a city employee, he cannot go into depth of what some of the things he would like to see, but I can. I know that we can improve housing. I know that we can improve access to treatment and care for those who are disproportionately impacted by HIV. I know that this city is capable of doing more for its LGBT community. And so while this bathroom initiative is for all, it is the first step for some to have their voices heard on a grander level. So, like I said, in 2012, I just reached out to Brendan Iambidazio because he was a friend. And it turned into a worldwide, global movement that got the NFL, Major League Baseball, NBA, Major League Soccer involved in the sports, to move them over to take a stance against bigotry and hate. We can do the same here in Baltimore, starting with this bill. And I am proud, very proud, of everyone who has worked on this to ensure that we are creating a better Baltimore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to recognize our new City Council President, Mr. Brandon Scott. Thank you. And we have another elected official with us in the House tonight. Sharon Brackett is the first trans member of the Central Committee ever in Baltimore, and you're up next.
Thank you, Chairman Cohen, members of the council. My name is Sharon Brackett, and I appear before you in support of Bill 190385. I'm a founding member and board chair of Gender Rights Maryland, and an elected member of the Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee for District 46, being the first trans person elected to any office in the state of Maryland. In 2014, SB 212, the Fairness for All Marylanders Act of 2014, now Chapter 474, was passed by the General Assembly and signed by Governor O'Malley to extend existing civil rights protections to trans and gender nonconforming GNC persons. Even though these rights have been enshrined in law, the reality is that many trans and GNC Marylanders and Baltimoreans still experience discrimination in all aspects of public accommodation, housing, and employment. It takes time for change, and as we all know, passing a law is only the first step. Implementation matters. This measure, which will only burden businesses, institutions, and government facilities to update existing signage, is a step forward in helping to ensure that trans and GNC persons can experience the dignity and comfort afforded other citizens and visitors in our city. Given the current trend of erosion of trans and GNC rights being put forward by the Trump administration, passage of this measure would be a strong counterstatement of the progressive and inclusive values of Baltimore and act as one more deterrent to the present tide of hate and disinformation coming from Washington. I'd like to offer my personal thanks to Councilmember Cohen for taking the lead on this effort. I would urge you all to forward this bill from committee with a favorable report. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, we will now hear from Ava Pipitone.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, members of the council. My name's Ava Pipitone, and I'm here today as the CEO of Host Home Benefit Corp. So I support Bill 1905. And I think it's really simple, right? It's maximizing assets and minimizing waste, is what my mentors would say. This is a small update in language, but in escalated situations involving my community, this matters. Because now, whenever anyone questions an individual's use of public accommodations, the law will most clearly be on our side, and not on the side of wasteful prejudice. We have facilities. We already have somewhat clear policies, but because of that lack of clarity, the trust to choose is not extended to trans people. And remember, this escalates with race and class. So thank you to all of the white trans folks and non-binary folks like myself who are here. But this legislation clarity has historically been weaponized against black trans folks in Baltimore City as a scapegoat to remove transness from a space, right? So this is a scapegoat to remove transness from a space. This little linguistic lack of clarity in the previous policy actually does matter and has been weaponized. So remember, bathroom policies are the front lines of access to public space. We've been here before. Bathrooms used to be racially segregated. Update the clarity of the language. Maximize the assets we already have in Baltimore City, both the physical restrooms and the assets that are our community, because honestly, we're part of Baltimore, and we've always been here. There's literally a transgender statue when you get off of the train at Penn Station. We have been here for a very long time. Welcome us, support us, and support 1905. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Monica Yakman, up next. Good afternoon.
Wow. So I'm honored to be here, truly, truly honored and humbled to be here. I want to speak, though, not as the creator of Sisters of the Tea and the co-founder of the Baltimore Transgender Alliance. I want to speak as a great-grandmother, as a transgender woman of African-American descent, and a grandmother and a mother. Because this bill represents something different to me, and something that no one has spoken about. See, here's the thing. You don't know if you're trans until you do. And so this bill affects everyone here, because anyone who has children or siblings, they may not come out to you as trans now, but they may come out to you as trans tomorrow. And so this bill also represents safety, you know, because I wrote an op-ed, and one of the things I talked about in the op-ed is being in situations where my gender was criminalized, and I faced the threat of going to jail and possibly being put into solitary confinement. And so that's one of the things that hasn't been spoken about, about being black and trans in Baltimore. And so, you know, if you have a sibling or a child, they may face that fate. You know, and so that may not be a fate that's a reality today, but it may be a fate that's a reality tomorrow. So one of the things that makes me really appreciate this bill is removing that as a possibility, because you're talking about something that can end careers. You're talking about something that takes away opportunities. So this is an important bill, because this bill may take away the next doctor, the next lawyer, the next city council member, just from having to use a bathroom, just having to answer the call of nature. You know, something like that could have stopped me from being able to meet Mary Pat Clark years ago. You know, so this bill is extremely powerful. You know, it's like Akil said, it's a small step that's actually a great step. So I appreciate all of you. This is extremely, extremely courageous, and it's extremely, extremely, you know, to me consequential. You know, so I urge all of you to take this step and all of the steps that come afterward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Alain Jollicure.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Alain, and I am the Chairwoman of the Advocacy and Education Committee on the Baltimore City LGBTQ Commission. In America, unfortunately, I'm always reminded of all of the aspects of my identities, as proud as I am of each and every one of them. One of these anxieties and fears that I go through in everyday life is related to restrooms. And 2014, as I was getting ready to graduate college, I knew that my option was limited in a place that I could live. When I look at the map of the US, I only had 16 states. Why? Well, these were the only states where I knew that I would have the protection against discrimination if I were to be employed. This is what brought me here, from the state of Florida, originally from Miami. And I left home because home did not cherish individuals like me, and I was looking for hope. Fate brought me here to Baltimore, and this is where the journey has brought me here today. Unfortunately, with the same hope that I was seeking, I've had to avoid businesses here in a number of districts because of fear of feeling unsafe in past experiences. And I do believe that my safety has restricted my opportunity of my buying power in our city. As much as I love this place, sometime I have to get away from it. I have to get on a plane, on a train, to get away from it, to go somewhere where I can be my true self, my full self, with no question asked. So some of the sacrifices I've had to make because of restroom has been the sheer medical consequences that's hold from holding your pee for too long. And unfortunately, I'm constantly reminded by these, because I have always have to make sure to force myself to pee before I leave, because I don't know when is the next time I'm going to have access to a restroom, or someone's not going to look at me differently. So in a sense, this is a small step for the long journey we have to take. And as an individual who only still has 16 states that she could live in in this country, I'm reminded on why safety, why positive health outcomes, why access matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kaylee Locklear-Tolls.
Good evening, honorable members of the council. Kaylee Locklear-Toll, here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Association. I really wanted to thank you, Councilman Cohen, for reaching out to us. I've spoken to a handful of you about this legislation, and I think we're at a point where the retailers are pretty comfortable with the bill. I did just want to point to the actual definition in the legislation, which is something that we talked a bit about. Many of our retailers that have single-stall bathrooms right now often have signage that will indicate family, or it will have a male and then a female on it, or male, female, some type of individual in a wheelchair, sometimes a baby on it. So we had talked a little bit about that. We would love to see the language broadened a little bit, so that signage and even international symbols that are used to indicate gender could possibly be a part of the legislation. And then the other two issues in the bill that we talked about, I just wanted to put on the record for everybody. We think that many businesses may not be aware of this legislation, especially immediately, so they should be given an opportunity to at least rectify the signage, the way the bill is written right now. And I think you might be introducing some amendments that speak to this. Everyday constituting a separate offense is tough, because if you order a sign, to make that change, you're going to need, we think, at least a couple of days to go ahead and do that. So I appreciate your time and talking to many of you already. I appreciate your consideration, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we will hear from Sharon Alkale.
Hi, how are you? I'm representing the Democratic Socialists of America. The original speaker who was supposed to be here couldn't be here, so I'm here in his place. If you could bear with me, I'm just going to read our statement. The Democratic Socialists of America is a 50,000-member-strong political organization formed in 1982.
Sorry, do you mind just lower the mic a little bit more?
Oh, sorry. Is that better? "We seek to end the exploitative and oppressive grip of capitalism that which holds over humanity by allowing the economy and society to be democratically controlled. Our driving goal as democratic socialists is to ensure people, primarily the working class, are valued as the most integral catalyst of society, rather than margins or profit margins or the whims of corporate elites. Since January 2017, the Greater Baltimore Chapter has organized around numerous issues in Baltimore, such as equity in mass transit, labor and workers' rights, Medicare for All, racial justice, canvas for electoral candidates, and most recently stood in solidarity with the Hopkins Coalition Against ICE and Students Against Private Police. As socialists, we reject an economic order based on private profit, alienated labor, gross inequalities of wealth and power, discrimination against race, sex, sexual orientation, gender expression, disability status, age, religion, and national origin, and brutality and violence in defense of the status quo. In keeping with these values, we firmly support the introduction of city council legislation making single occupancy restrooms gender-neutral in Baltimore City to safeguard the human dignity of our transgender and non-binary comrades. While the Fairness for All Marylanders Act enacted in 2014 made discrimination in any public accommodation, including restrooms, illegal, it did not stipulate that signage be created to indicate this change. City Council Bill 190385 would explicitly require posted signage to be featured outside of public restrooms, affirming protections for transgender people already existing in Maryland law. Contrary to assertions of opponents, doing so would not increase safety risks for restroom patrons. According to a recent UCLA School of Law study, there is no measurable correlation between gender-neutral bathrooms and escalation of criminal activity. Such views are fear-based and reflect archaic conceptions of heteronormative gender norms. Nearly 60% of transgender people avoid using public restrooms for fear of harassment or physical reprisal. This fear is not allayed by protection from members of the Baltimore Police Department, who frequently engage in debasing and discriminatory conduct of transgender people, most notably black trans women. Violence has often been experienced as a result for transgender people using restrooms that correspond to their gender identity. This is a matter of life and death for trans and non-binary people. Endorsing legislation in Baltimore City to visibly designate public restrooms as gender-neutral spaces safeguards the human dignity of transgender and non-binary people. Doing so not only protects our trans and non-binary comrades, but also normalizes them as valued, talented, cherished members of the human family and our communities." them as valued, talented, cherished members of the human family and our communities. The Greater Baltimore Democratic Socialists of America urges a vote in the affirmative on City Council Bill 190385, respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear some remarks from President Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have to leave in a second. I just wanted to first thank you for introducing this important piece of legislation and for all of our council colleagues for supporting it. I know that oftentimes, I know that you have been getting a lot of flak for doing this amidst everything that's going on in the city, but small pieces of legislation to do something so simple can have a great impact, and that's what we think this would do. So I wanted to say thank you for introducing it, that I support this piece of legislation. Carry on with the hearing.
Thank you, President Scott. All right, we are going to hear from Nathan Rair, and then we'll proceed to some of these amendments, and then vote, and then continue to hear testimony. Nathan.
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm here representing Suspended Brewing Company, which is a small business in Baltimore that strives to be inclusive, promote diversity, and be as valuable to the community as we can be. We're located in Pig Town, and if you haven't been able to visit us yet, we focus on our taproom, trying to, we only sell our beer there. We get people to come to the city, we get people to come to Pig Town, they have to come here to drink it. We only employ about nine people, and we just celebrated our first anniversary with a really exceptional and fun drag brunch. We're still working to grow our business, but even as small and new as we are, we found ways to support the community by partnering with a local nonprofit, Free State Justice, showcasing art by queer artists in the space, and signing on to the Open to All pledge to raise awareness among our customers and community on a regular basis. Our team strongly supports the queer community in helping raise awareness and make more queer-friendly and safe spaces in Baltimore, including our own. One of the many ways we can do this is, one of the many ways we can make our spaces more open, diverse, and safe is gender-neutral signage on our restrooms, so that each time a person who doesn't identify as male or female doesn't have to make a decision that's nearly impossible for us, who don't have to make that decision, to understand. We strongly support this bill and efforts it's making. We believe this is a positive step in making safer spaces in Baltimore. We hope that one day it will go further, making not only single-stall restrooms gender-neutral, but all types of restroom facilities. Our space is in the old Baltimore Playwrights Theater, and we made use of the existing restroom facilities, which are multi-stall, so this bill wouldn't actually affect us right now. But we've had a number of customers ask and recommend that we hang gender-neutral signage on our restrooms to make them more inclusive, so we hope that this will be, you know, an initial step in this movement. Just a small side plug for sustainability, another easy way to do this is just to simply note which restrooms have a urinal and which ones don't. Urinals are, they use a lot less water, and they help us, and businesses, keep their operating costs down, so, you know, we would want to note that, but other than that, we don't really, we don't really care what else is on the sign. Taking this small step would help our city build foundation, and we need to go further. Or, sorry, we do care what's on the sign, we want it to be gender-neutral. We'll be here supporting our friends and neighbors as we continue to advocate for easier processes for name changes, for changing gender markers on licenses, and other policies that go beyond just the restroom. We're grateful to the city council, that we're grateful that the city council is reviewing this bill and asks for your support in helping make our city safer and more friendly to the LGBTQ+ community.
Thank you, Nathan. All right, so we have six amendments on my colleagues' desks, and I just wanted to do a quick sort of run-through. In essence, aside from a small technical change, there are a few things going on here. One is that, one amendment is going to move this legislation out of the health code and into licensing and regulations. The reason for that was we didn't actually feel this bill fits into the health code, but felt more strongly about it being in licensing and registrations. We also want to make sure all departments with any sort of regulatory capacity are charged with inspection. So the way this is going to work is folks will report through 311, and then not just health inspectors, but any sort of inspector from either health, housing, public works, wrecking park, transportation, fire, police, and any other agency with more employees who are in a position of trust and authorized to serve as a code enforcement officer in accord with City Code Article 40-1(c)(3). So basically, any one of our inspectors is able to issue citations, not just health inspectors. And then finally, something that Ms. Locklear-Toles brought up earlier, there was a feeling that instead of instantly penalizing businesses with an $100 fine, when we know that some of our businesses, even though there is a 90-day rollout period, we know that some of our small businesses, especially some of our non-English-language businesses, may not be aware that this legislation is coming. And our goal is not to penalize small businesses, it's really not to put anyone out. And so one of the amendments here changes the first violation to a written warning and provides for 30 days after that written warning is issued for a new sign to be placed. Again, we didn't want to just issue the warning and then have the inspector come back the next day and cite the person, and then ongoing. However, after that 30 days, you're on your own, and there is a subsequent penalty, and you can be penalized each day you do not update your signage. So those are the amendments being offered. Again, there are six of them. To my colleagues, any questions or discussion of any of these amendments?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Clark, you all right?
Yes.
All right. Then I would ask for a motion to move Amendments 1 through 6.
Move. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilwoman, Councilmember Clark. We will... All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstaining.
All right, so move Amendments 1 through 6. Pass. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 19-0385 as amended?
Move the bill as amended, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Burnett, second by Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Dorsey.
Just before we move the bill, I just want to commend the use of the phrase "water closet" in the bill. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. All right, we will proceed to take a vote. We had a motion by Councilmember Burnett, a second by Councilwoman Bullock, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clark, sorry, Mary Pat. So Councilmember Cohen votes yes. Vice Chair Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnett?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorsey?
Yes.
With five votes in the affirmative and none in the negative, this legislation passes on first reader and will proceed to second reader at next Monday's council meeting. We are going to continue to hear testimony, and again, I thank my colleagues for their support. We're going to continue to hear testimony. Next up to speak, actually, I think that we, does anyone else from the public want to testify on this legislation?
Great.
Great, while you're waiting.
All right, I thank everyone for coming out. Come on up. Jamie.
Hi, I'm Jamie Grace. I'm a student activist and the community director of the Baltimore Transgender Alliance. I just wanted to both echo and commend what all of the other black and transgender people have said here today, that this legislation is more than about bathrooms, it's about access to public space, and we're seeing that represented by the amount of queer people that we have in the room here today. Hopefully, Baltimore's public space can be more easily accessed by people of marginalized identities, and I think that this is a step in the right direction, especially in a city where so many spaces are inaccessible to homeless individuals, black individuals, and trans individuals. Just looking at university systems, looking at city buildings, I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make sure that spaces are accessible to everyone, and I commend you all for doing that work to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And thank you for your advocacy and activism as well.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else from the public looking to testify? Come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be brief with you guys. My name is John Dingson, and I am a Patterson High School senior. I'm also named as after the Patterson High School mayor and SGA former president. I would just like to applaud on everyone's support on this hearing. And Councilmen, thank you very much for what everyone is doing, and especially the activists. I know that in this century of modern society today, it's very difficult, these are trying times, we have hateful crime, a lot of those stuff, and we really have to stick together, and we have to work together towards completing to our goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Once again, always great to hear student voice, especially from Patterson High School. Anyone else from the public that would like to testify on this bill? All right, well, let me just say that this bill will proceed to second reader. Our goal is to have it signed at Pride, and I just want to recognize all the folks who have put really, really strong work into this, again, particularly Jabari from the Mayor's LGBTQ liaison, Stephanie from my office. It means a lot in this deeply challenged moment for our city that we are continuing to take steps forward. And just being here and hearing particularly from all the trans and gender nonconforming folks who often do not have a voice in these chambers was really powerful today. So thank you for coming, thank you for testifying, thank you for being part of our city, and know that you are seen and you are heard, and I look forward to seeing everyone on Monday. This committee is dismissed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Mary.